Good evening, everyone. If you'd please stand, the Tuscaloosa City Council has now come to order. We're gonna begin tonight's meeting with a prayer, and if you would, please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Power your heads, please. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us the wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Approval of the minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the minutes, voting Mr. Crowe. Wow, this is first time ever.
Yeah.
Aye.
Yes, yes, all good.
Yes.
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 Well, when I said it was gonna be a historic night at the city council night, I didn't know it would include you to begin a vote with the city council, so.
That history's over.
Yeah, hey, you know what, it's still history. Proclamation and statements by mayor and council, do we have any council announcements tonight?
I don't have any council announcements, but I think Chief Rice wanted to say something, and under department announcements, mayor, if that's appropriate.
He's got a gun.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. I meant to say something in our last committee, but got sidetracked. So, we have our national night out tonight at Snow Kenton Park from 5:30 to 8 o'clock. Hopefully, the rain will miss us, and we'll have helicopters there, Mr. Busby, you're more than welcome to check that out. But from 5:30 to 8, we'll come meet some officers and see all our equipment, get some free hot dogs.
I just came by there earlier, and it's already a big turnout. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you and TPD do. Thank you. Any other council announcements?
I'll be at Jackson Skylon Saturday, I almost forgot.
All right, 9:00 AM?
9:00 AM, come see me if we're talking about whatever you wanna talk about.
That's all right, Mr. Fell's gonna be on the Jackson Skylon Boulevard at 9:00 AM, and I can say, 'cause I've been there with him, he is there, and he might even buy your cup of coffee. Might even do that. Um, any agenda item comments, my citizens?
No, sir.
There's no unfinished business consent agenda, clerk?
This approves items A through F on the consent agenda.
Move adoption.
Say.
Been moved and seconded to adopt a consent agenda, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Consent agenda is adopted, public hearings, clerk?
This will consent to the vacation of a portion of Fourth Street in the city of Tuscaloosa.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the council was briefed on this earlier, any questions before I ask for the public hearing? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against the vacation? Seeing none, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 The vacation is adopted, resolution ordinances not of a general nature or permanent operation, clerk?
This authorizes a resolution in support of proceeding with the design phase services for both the Saban Center and the Tuscaloosa Event Center.
Move adoption, second.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm willing to bite off one at a time, but I can't do both, no.
Yes.
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 The resolution is adopted, congratulations, we'll take the next step.
May I say something, mayor?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I just hope when the design starts, from the beginning, I am major advocate of 30,000 square feet for this event center, and I think we need to have a minimum of 30.
I agree with you, Mr. Kiner.
May I say something?
Can we butt fall on that?
Um, I think this is a premier opportunity for our district, District One, this is a great investment, and we're looking forward to all of Tuscaloosa realizing that the possibilities are great for our district, and we're looking for everyone to be on board so that we can make this dream become a reality.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank the council for its faith, and we certainly look forward to the next steps in this. I certainly want to thank Aldry and Brant out there, and I know there's many others on our team that put years on this, and I thank them. And we have many members of the business community here tonight, who quite frankly, if they wouldn't have stepped up to the plate and supported Elevate, we wouldn't have this opportunity, and I see Kelsey back there with TTS. Our goal is that you're gonna be so busy filling hotel rooms, you're gonna need more and more resources, which we will have to do. So, good luck on all this. So, it's a historic night, and I want to thank everyone for playing a real part in this.
Is it? I'd like to make a comment too.
Absolutely. I was just gonna say, this has been a, I think, a good process most of the time, but it's been a long process that we've all spent many, many months in this last year, and one of the things that I think is important for the community now is the council and staff and the mayor, I think we've done our due diligence on this, we've had a bunch of work sessions. We've gone a lot of extra miles, in my opinion, that maybe certain people think we may have gone too far, but I personally, and I think everybody up here feels like we were elected to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and to make a good decision. The foundation of this, to me, is a very conservative budget, based on how we've looked at this. Overall, I think this will be transformative for our community. The Saban Center also, we don't talk enough, I don't think, about the private sector involvement. This is not just gonna be your government doing this, and I think that's very important. And the Event Center, I think we all agree, is something that we are seriously looking at doing, because I think that could put our community at the next level. So, anyway, just wanted to say that.
Mayor, as the second most senior member of the council, I'm gonna be quick, but I do just wanna say, from way back when we first introduced Elevate Tuscaloosa up into this moment, all of that hard work seems to just continuously be paying off, and I'm very excited to be at this moment, not just for what it would do to West Tuscaloosa, but all of Tuscaloosa. Our families and our children need and deserve so much more, and I'm very excited about this moment.
Thank you, this is gonna be phenomenal, and we look forward to working with the council and the community as we get into the next crucial phase. So, congratulations to Tuscaloosa, and look forward to working with everyone moving forward.
Absolutely.
Well, let's get to the rest of the meeting, clerk.
All right.
If you wouldn't mind, Brandy introducing, or Ms. Johnson introducing, the next resolution.
This will authorize the city of Tuscaloosa to join the state of Alabama and other local governments as participants in the McKesson settlement.
Move adoption.
Say.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes the city of Tuscaloosa to join the state of Alabama and other local governments as participants in the Jansen settlement.
So moved.
Say.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize Amendment 11 to the fiscal year 2022 General Fund Reserve for Future Improvements Fund Budget.
Call for the adoption, second.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes Amendment 9 to the fiscal year 2022 Water and Sewer Reserve for Future Improvements Fund Budget.
So moved.
Say.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted, clerk?
Substitute for Page 25 will authorize execution of a letter rejecting infra grant.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes the rejection of bids received for the 2022 Water Changeout Meter Changeout Project Phase 1 and authorizes rebid.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize personnel to conduct financial transactions on behalf of the city.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes signers to various city accounts.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize the chief financial officer to draw drafts for the McRice Ferry Road Improvements Project Right-A-Way acquisitions.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, and I would also say that's another historic vote.
I was just gonna say too, if I can, this, provided that this closes, Mr. Bobbitt's here, I don't think, he's sitting up there, I think it will close, but all of the tracks for the McRice Ferry Road are gonna be done, which means we're gonna go to construction, or bids within the fall, and actual construction first of next year, so for all the phone calls and naysayers that have said that we've been trying to do this for 20 years, it's coming, so just, this is a big night too for that.
Absolutely. Clerk?
This will declare an emergency and authorize an emergency public works contract with John Plot Company Incorporated.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Triple J Tree Service LLC.
Motion.
Say.
Second.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes a contract with Chambliss King Architects for the facility upgrades and improvements to the Boys and Girls Club.
Move adoption.
Say.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize a disbursement from District 4 Improvements Funds for the downtown branch of the YMCA.
Move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes the mayor to make an application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the fiscal year 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant.
So moved. Option. Second.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize Amendment 12 to the fiscal year 2022 General Fund Reserve for Future Improvements Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Budget's amended, clerk?
This will authorize the Tuscaloosa Police Department to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Tuscaloosa VA Medical Center.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, ordinances, resolutions of a general nature or permanent operation for introduction, clerk?
This will introduce zoning amendment number 1481.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Clerk?
This will authorize Amendment 4 to the fiscal year 2022 Water and Sewer Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Off unanimous consent.
Second.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Amendment is adopted, clerk?
This will authorize Amendment 13 to the fiscal year 2022 General Fund Budget.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Off unanimous. Second.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Amendment is adopted, clerk?
This will amend various sections of the Code of Tuscaloosa pertaining to fire code violations and fines.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Off unanimous consent.
Second.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Codes amended, clerk?
This will amend various sections of the Code of Tuscaloosa pertaining to false alarm notifications.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Off unanimous.
Second.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Codes amended for adoption, clerk?
Auditing accounts. This, ooh, let's see, this set September 6th as a date for a hearing to consider adoption of zoning amendment 1481.
Move.
Say.
Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 I want to mark the date of August 2nd as historic, 'cause finally, for once, I was right.
He was, you were.
I was, and Ms. Johnson is always right, so.
She's my favorite clerk.
She's my favorite too, she does an unbelievable job. I just had to go, grant me one big group.
I got you that one.
All right. Auditing accounts.
This authorizes the payment of bills.
Pay your bills.
Pay your bills.
Bills. Moved and seconded, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Bills are paid, citizens' comments and other communications, any citizens wish to address their city council tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wouldn't mind giving your name and address?
The incident that happened July 26th.
Yes, ma'am, if you wouldn't mind giving your name and address?
Oh, Yolanda Ron, Uniontown, Alabama, not even from there. Um, the incident that occurred July 26th at the club called Spade, and I was here to see, can you shut this club down, because A, not from here, B, I work in Bellesima, C, I had to get a phone call from my daughter that's thousands and thousands of miles away in a whole nother country, dead. My son been shot. That probably almost the second worst feeling you can get. Left work. Got to Tuscaloosa, talked to God all the way to Tuscaloosa. What happened? Nobody wants to talk about it, but guess what, I want to talk about it, because guess what? He didn't have no chances of living. No, that was already out the question. Goddamn, doctors telling me, you know, Ms. Ron, we working with him, working with him, working with him, working with him. Well, as we go on, I wasn't notified, and I only got a FaceTime from my daughter. If I didn't answer this FaceTime, I'd still be at work, and got it when I had walked out Amazon door. Well, on your, on his wall or agenda, whatever it is, you said you had to be 25 to walk in this club. This the young guy did, got shot. He only 24. Turned 24 July, July 14th, this year. And he said they called him, but what did you call him for? You said he had to be 25, he only 24, why did you let him in the club? No answer, but everybody here to chase a dollar. I just know how things work, I was young at once upon a time, I went to clubs and knew I went old enough to get in, guess what? Things ain't hard as, ain't bad as it is when I was growing up. And I guess he reached out to my son Tyler, and I guess everybody wanted to be on the road. But just previous, you had the same club was named under another name. Y'all shot it down, you only had one city council that wanted to vote to keep him in, keep this club on, but why? A, I work four days a week, 10 hours a day, and guess what? I complain about how high gas is here, because I drive an hour, I drive an hour and 20 minutes to work, gotta drive an hour and 20 minutes back home. I complain about groceries, nobody there but me and my husband, but guess what? It's so high that we complain about, but we can blow up on a Tuesday night at a club, that mean ain't nobody working. It can't be. Is that better me to get another phone call and my son gone this time? Violation was already done when you let him in this club, he only 24, you called him for what? I mean, I ain't gonna say I'm the smartest person, but pull out your phone, use your calculator and see what this, see what his age is, sir, I can't let you in. But we all here to chase a dollar, never knew where this club was, 'cause I'm too grown to party. And when I left the hospital at nine something Tuesday morning, I just rode out there and see what this club looked like. I was like, mm. Went home, got me some sleep, jumped up, knew I had to come back here and check on my son, but he was all right when I left. But you know, things can change when you go home and go to sleep. Came back, he was, they woke him up, 'cause he was heavy today, and I'm just saying, you, your club will open, if your club opened at night, what make you think somebody, the child ain't gonna be gone tomorrow? Everybody don't get a second chance at life. And I just want to vote, I mean, I just want to know, how can y'all shut his club down, because the shooter wasn't number 24. And I'm just thinking, he normal, he goes to the club all the time. And it's all right, and until you get that phone call, you don't hear home till you hit your home. When you hit your home, everybody want to shut down to see, don't shut it down, because Ms. Ron standing right here, and her son barely made it, made it out. Somebody, that child ain't gonna make it out. And who said you calling everybody for what? Because these underage kids, the sister that was with him, she 24. So we just really here to chase a dollar to keep you in this club and stuff like that. Violation was already made when you let him in the club.
Yes, ma'am, does the council want to extend, um, um, if you can, one more minute, if you can wrap up in one more minute.
Oh, that's all I have to say, just, how can you shut a club down, 'cause somebody, the child gonna get shot for stupidity. My son ain't even affiliated, my son stay out here in Houston, Texas. Came home the hand of some business, and your sister saying, let's just go out and, you know, drink or whatsoever. You can't get a chance to drink, 'cause you laying down and on some rocks while blood shooting out your leg. And the only thing everybody can do is just stand there and watch while stupidity go on. And my thing is, my mom used to tell me all the time, if you gotta go somewhere with a gun, you probably need to stay at home. And young people just taking over this world, nobody accountable for nothing that goes on, it's just a hit on the wrist. You made bail. My son barely made it, so if he didn't make, if my son didn't make it, what you was gonna do, keep him in jail till after the film? But you still gonna get him bail, and he already got plenty charges on him, but the exact same thing in Green County. And our judicial system ain't doing but felonies.
Any questions of the council? Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Wilson. Anyone else wish to address the city council tonight? If you would, please come forward, give your name and address.
Tyler Ron, staying in Houston, Texas, but I'm a resident of Uniontown, Alabama. And just like to, even just like to piggyback on that night, it was a hard night, like with three kids, growing up, raising three kids, young, trying to be in their life. And just to see like everyone on the wall just looking at me bleed out, looking at me bleed out, calling, asking for help, knowing I got three kids that I had to raise, here or not, I served in the army four and a half years. Been to overseas, never been shot, no, this is my first incident, coming here to see my kids, coming here to spend time with my sister, and now I'm fighting for my life, never I had to fight for my life, I fought for you guys' life. I never had to fight for my own, as in laying on the hospital bed, not knowing, telling them I'm dehydrated, telling them I need some water, telling them, just everything. No one was able to help me, just seeing that, just, and it breaks my heart. And I'm here with my youngest son, he don't even know what's going on, he five months. And just to see that no one was really worried, and everyone having the excuse of why they couldn't help me, and why, and I'm crawling big, and I got bruised from down my leg, like, and I was hitting my main artery, I wasn't even hit down my leg, so I could barely stand at 24 years old. And it hurts my heart just to see that if I didn't make it, none of these people would have been trying to provide for my kid. And just, I didn't do nothing wrong that night, besides coming to the, I didn't know that, not being here, I didn't know the age limit of nothing. So I'm just going where my sister said, hey, let's go. And just knowing that I had to like have a life, a life of suffering, of something that I didn't even, I wasn't a cause for, affiliated with, it really hurts me and hurts the people around me, because they had to deal with this too, have to help me, and recovery time is a year. I didn't ask for this at all, but everyone makes it seem like, oh, we gonna help you just for the time being. Nobody not really gonna say, oh, is your kid straight, how your kid feeling? Seeing my daughter calling me, that leg hurt, that leg hurt, I can't hold her at all, and that breaks my heart. That breaks my heart, can't hold my little girl who love me to death. And I'm sitting here walking around, hunchback, like, trying to stand strong for them. No one knows that feeling, no one knows that feeling, knowing every, if I would have moved a little bit to the left or a little bit to the right, I could have been out of here. And no one found me, found enough in their heart to come out and at least try to get me to the ambulance. Waited 10 minutes, a main artery, you bleed out in eight to 10 minutes. No one found it in their heart to come out and say, hey, they don't know what this man got going on in his life, but let's try to save him. Everyone like a one man, a one security guard can hold everyone back. If you had any kind of moral, no one man could have held this person back, even if he wasn't, I wasn't part of the problem. I'm just walking, I called for my sister after the fight escalated, to let's get to the car and go away, 'cause I'm not from here, I don't know nobody from here, no one's not gonna protect me, so the best thing to do is just leave. And sitting here just like, hear my mama cry, hear my daughter say that, and just hearing everyone affected by it, by something I didn't cause for myself, it really hurts me, and no one understands it. And she totally right in what she said, because who want their mother to leave before your mother, like, 20 something years old, wasn't involved in nothing. Just came here, a veteran, just came here to see his family, his kid. And now I gotta deal with this the rest of my life, or the next year's coming. And it's gonna, it's gonna affect me mentally, physically, and emotionally. No one takes notes of that, they just, oh, he survived, he survived, but this man never been shot, this man never been, none of that. But look at him now, getting wounded outside the service. You would expect to get wounded inside, you wouldn't expect to be on your country, on your land, on your country, and getting, becoming a victim of somebody else's stupidity. But something that could have been handled, something that could have been nipped in the bud before time. No one understand that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ron, thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you for your service.
Anyone else wish, wish to address the city council tonight? If you would, please give your name and address.
Senator Jones, seventeen thirty-five Culver Road. First off, I want to give my heart out to the young man that got shot. And, um, I know words can't express how it feels when an individual get harmed or get shot, because I've never been shot, so I can't really speak on what he's going through. But to clarify a few things, as far as the age, that the law is twenty-one. So sometime, like, we have a situation where I'm not saying that we're gonna make him getting shot, right or wrong, where he's wrong. But at the same time, we all gotta hold ourselves accountable, because we gonna say, hey, let's close this business down. We didn't personally invite you here, you was invited by one of your family members to come enjoy yourself. You know what I'm saying? And that's one of my main things, that we don't want to be targeted for things that are out of our control, I'm speaking on behalf of Spades and, we don't want to be hit, because sometime when things go on in the parking lot, we trying our best, we got plenty of security. We had off-duty police officers working also. So I don't think that this situation was a situation of negligence with the business. And as far as the different rules and regulations, by law, we wasn't in violation with him being under twenty-five. We suggested, hey, we gonna, we gonna sell to the twenty-five and up crowd in our initial conditional hearing. But by law, we were, we were held to, uh, we're licensed as a bar and a tavern. So if I'm not, if I'm not correct, I think the age is nineteen and up, bar and tavern and gastro pool, which is twenty-one and up. I may be wrong, I'm not, may not be correct. But I was coming up to speak on our behalf, because we can get up here and say, hey, let's close the business down, close this down. But it's stuff that happens out of control. Maybe twenty-four, forty-eight hours later, somebody got shot at the Chevron. You know, and it's like, okay, what happens then when we have these random shootings? It's not like, hey, if he gets shot inside the building, we responsible because we lack to search the people properly to get in, and that causes confusion inside of the building. Which, and once again, you know, and to speak on, the guy laying down, I was actually a couple of feet away from him. But in the past, I know if somebody shot, apply some pressure to it, or don't move him, we'll know where the bullet at, you can move the bullet, and it can cause the situation, maybe say the bullet in one of their organs, you move it, then it's causing more damage trying to move him. So we saying, hey, let's get the paramedics here, so he can get the proper care, so that we can make sure that he's, um, you know, treated properly. So that's all I want to share on the behalf of Spades and, uh, maybe some more people want to speak on the behalf. Alright, thank.
Thank you. If you would, please give your name and address.
Evening, councilman, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Laquinton Tony, owner of Spades Restaurant and Lounge, seventeen thirty-five Culver Road. First and foremost, I would like to give another sincere apology to Mr. Wrong and his mother, Mrs. Wrong. I know that that was a very unfortunate situation. We did everything that we told that we would do, we have off-duty officers. We also have extra security surrounding the building. It was unfortunate situation, it happened, it started in the beginning, and we got him out as soon as, as soon and quickly as possible. Like, it hurts, uh, it hurt to see me, I mean, to see you down like that. And I reached out to you, I reached out to your sister, to find you, to find who you were, because I did not know you. But it did hurt, hurt to see you like that. And I actually visited the victim, Mr. Wrong, I visited him at the hospital, I also visited him at his sister's home, where, whom, where he was visiting while he was here. Um, we're doing everything we can. Um, I know it's the violence, it's bad, it's, it was very unfortunate, but we also have to hold each other accountable. Not just us, also Mr. Councilman, the TPD, and, and as well as the jurors. You can't just blame one thing, you can't target one thing. If you want to shut down Spades, what about any other bar down on the strip? Downtown, the mall, there was a shooting at DCH recently, there was a shooting at Chevron the day after. What are we gonna do about those things? Any questions?
Any questions?
Um.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the city council tonight? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Man, city council, how y'all doing? My name is Sean Robinson, also, uh, seventeen thirty-five Culver Road. Um, I'm one of the, uh, managers there at Spades. Also, I spent a long time in Rose there, which is right over here on the south side. Uh, whose district is that? Yo district, how you doing, sister? So, on behalf of Spades, like we were saying, man, we greatly apologize for anything that, um, that was something that we definitely would have wished to occur. And once again, appreciate you for your service. I know the, I know the fact of that it's not gonna change anything that has happened, it's not gonna change the fact that you were hurt in that situation. But I promise you that anything legally that could be done as far as behalf of Spades, that we will conduct in it, and also anyone that was involved in the shooting, we will be able to do whatever we can to make sure that you get justice for what happened. Mom, I have three children, I'm sorry, four. I have four children, I'm married, and I understand the aspect of getting a phone call about that. My mother has gotten. As far as me being around and being out, I've been shot, and it's a hard situation for her to occur. So I definitely understand everything that you're going through, and I deeply apologize for that. As, um, the colleagues, the owner was speaking about, we have had several different incidents that have occurred. And like you were saying at the Chevron, we have yet to see those gas stations closed down. We have yet to see various venues that have had same incidents of that nature closed down. And to speak upon that would be the fact of understanding that all situations can be controlled, but we try to our best. Right now, if something was to happen in front of the city council building, and all of us are sitting here present, will we shut the city council building down due to an aspect none of one of us can control? But we have to understand, and we have to have an educated mind when it comes down to, to be able to present it, to be able to execute everything within our power, to keep things from happening. Security, yes, we already have them, but we also have booked it up. We want people to know that they are safe when they come to our establishment, that they are safe when they are on our grounds. And God knows that we can't control anything that is off our grounds, but while they're here, we gonna do, excuse my language, our damn best to make sure that it happens. Well, in our facility, we want our facility with a tight fist, everything is looked at, everything is overlooked, and everything that has occurred will not occur again. So speaking on behalf of that, man, uh, just thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak. Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the job that you're doing, city council members, thank you for doing the best that you can in your district with the resources that you have available, and the people that you have encourage. And that'd be awesome.
And, and I do want to put a point, to my knowledge, there is no, there's nothing with the administration pursuing a revocation of your business license. So, and so I know of no, there's no internal effort on that, so I just want y'all to be, to know.
That'd be great, and if we can definitely keep that energy for the further on years, I definitely appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the city council? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kendra Horton, I live in Cottondale, Alabama, but I'm from Hope. Um, I work at Spades Restaurant and Lounge, and I do want to say that we are not a club, it's a restaurant and lounge. You can come in, get you some lamb chops, enjoy some good macaroni and cheese, mashed potatoes, you can get some good entertainment, listen to music, you can smoke your hookah. It's a place where you can relax. As a child, I only knew about, I would say the west side, but District One, I was only allowed to go to District One to churches. I only knew Bethel, the religion center. My mom didn't feel safe with me going on the west side, so I never went if it wasn't church related. This is someplace that I feel safe. I have two kids of my own, I go to work, I feel safe. We have off-duty police officers located there, a lot of lounges don't have that. So as a worker, we actually feel safe, because we have people who actually, you know, everybody don't respect security. Everybody don't respect authority of any kind. But just knowing that we have that there, and knowing that we haven't been in business that long, but we just received, with only being in business, I think it was two to three months, we received the Tuscaloosa Black Excellence Award. People are noticing that, you know, we're, we're trying to bring something nice to District One. We're the same people that donated bikes. We did, uh, I think it was a spring break, uh, at Stillman College. They gave our free haircuts, you could get your hair done for free, that's for old and young, entertainment, they had fun. Something just to give the kids something to do. These guys give, are giving back to a community in which they don't stay, just because their business is located there. There's plenty of businesses located in District One where shootings take place, where they don't even do anything for the community as far as, other than what they're selling. There's plenty of half-stores in District One. I don't see them giving back to the community at all, because they don't care about the community, they're making the funds. We have something for the community, we want Stillman College kids to have somewhere where they can go. You don't have to go to the strip, you don't have to go downtown, there's stuff in, this is a place that maybe years down the line would make people outside of District One, hey, let's go over to Spades and have some lamb chops. There's not plenty of places in Tuscaloosa where you can get a lamb chop plate. And especially not one like Spades. We have good lamb chops too, y'all should try them out. But, um, I just wanna, uh, say that I don't want it to, you know, I was there, I was present the night of the shooting, and it was unfortunate. And I can say that we were ran so tight-knit that the people on the inside, we were even unaware that a shooting had taken place. So it was very, you know, everything was organized, it was handled outside amongst security. Us on the inside, if they wouldn't have came in and told us to get to a secure spot, we wouldn't have even known that a shooting took, had taken place. So it's, it's not like everything is run amok, it's no, uh, organization there, we're very organized, they do not play. When you, when you ask citizens of Tuscaloosa, they can't do everything at Spades, and we have it like that for a reason. Not smoking in Spades, you can go to these other lounges and do it, we're tight-knit, if you want to smoke, go to the patio. We have elderly come, eat Sunday dinner, we have soul food Sundays, you can come get a soul food plate, listen to some gospel music, listen to some R and B, enjoy yourself, wind down. And it is, it is supposed to be twenty-five and up, but you also want to give your college kids, again, another place to go. You have Stillman, not even that far from Spades Restaurant and Lounge, why not give those kids somewhere to go? As long as they're twenty-one and up, which I do understand it was stated twenty-five and up, which we do have a crowd for that too. But what I'm saying is, they want to be able to go somewhere, they have to venture out, why have to drive way out the way to enjoy yourself when it's a business right here? That's trying to cater to your needs, they're trying to make sure that you feel sa, as safe as we can. You're not safe anywhere, you're not safe at Walmart, shootings happens at Walmart. You're not safe in school, shootings happens at school. You, you, you can only do so much. But I would like to say on behalf of Spades, and I'm not an owner, I'm just a worker at Spades. But we care about our customers, we want to have more customers, we would love to see people from different districts come try Spades Restaurant and Lounge, because we are not a club, we are a restaurant and lounge, and we conduct ourselves as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the city council tonight? If you would, please give your name and address.
Brandon Hanks, five oh four Twenty-first Avenue, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, three five four oh one. Um, I'm here in reference to last week's, uh, public comments. Uh, I think it was Mr. Burl Thorne, uh, had approached the council regarding Black Warrior Farm. Um, and with the events, we understand his frustrations, uh, with, with his location. But I wanted to kind of set the record straight, and I have Casey Johnson, the Special Events Management, who does all of our booking for us, and also Gary, who's with SAS Security, to kind of go over a few of the things that were said. Um, the area that we're in is a heavy industrial area, so a lot of the, the comments regarding it being out there on a farm and being out by itself, you've got two trucking companies that back up right behind us, you've got a shooting range that borders the other side of his property. Um, we also have done everything we could possibly do to lessen the effects, and I think Mr. Thorne had said that it has gotten less from two thousand and eighteen when we started this process. Um, you know, we've had the stage, you know, moved in different angles, we've had, just recently, Alabama power dropped lines, so we're actually able to have the generators gone, which are very loud. So we've reduced the sound and the footprint over all this time, and it's still gonna have sound, but we've got other neighbors there, and we've not had any complaints. We've never had in five years a medical call, a fire call, police call, other than the complaints that have been filed by Mr. Thorne. Um, the investigator had reached out to the property owner to go over the sound ordinances. He went through everything, and he said, I've, I've looked at all sides of this, and there's nothing that can be done as far as the sound goes. If you guys want to open up a level of communication that's a little bit better, which we're willing to do, and I'm fine with giving him a list of the events, the dates, the times, and we're willing to work with him, you know, if he wants to go dinner, we're willing to pay for that, to get him out of the house, if that's, if that's something he would rather do, or a hotel, or, you know, we've done that for one of the other neighbors. Um, but as far as someone not being there on premise to talk to Mr. Thorne, I'm at every single event. I mean, every single one of them, the security can attest for it, um, my security actually talked with him for like forty-five minutes this last time. Um, so we just wanted to kind of go over a few things, I'll go ahead and just hand it over, my time over to, uh, Casey, so she can kind of explain how the events work and how they take place, and what goes into the schedule.
Brandon, um, I'm Casey Johnson of Special Events Management, um, it's owned by a local businessman, um, Nick Wright. Um, and we are at fourteen twenty-three Twenty-second Avenue here in Tuscaloosa. Um, for years, Special Events Management has been asked to find ways to have some sort of farm party. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, the landowners, Downtown Entertainment and Special Events Management, helped, um, US sororities find a way to ho, host these events responsibly and efficiently in accordance with the strict rules of sororities. And I don't know if you know much about that, but they are very strict in how they are able to conduct, uh, their parties. Our processes are constantly reviewed to make sure that we are providing the best possible safest events. Um, Mr. Thorne, um, mentioned that these parties could be, um, handled at sorority houses. Um, I just want to make sure everybody understands, date parties are not allowed at sorority houses. Um, and unfortunately, underground parties kind of like this are an irresponsible reality. Um, and we can all agree that those parties could become dangerous if they really did occur. Um, since two thousand and eighteen, as Brandon mentioned, there have been zero medic calls, um, that have, uh, happened as a part of, part of these, um, farm events. This is largely in part due to Downtown Entertainment certification and the Alabama Responsible Vendor Program, um, the security measures that are taken for these events. Um, for each event, approximately a hundred people are employed to safely handle them. Um, and just note, please, these events are, are planned six months in advance. So that is to help us to provide a proper planning for them. Um, he did report that the, um, uh, property is two hundred and fifty yards from him, his home to the event location. We did verify, the measurement, um, is, uh, three hundred and seven yards, so not much more, but there is a barrier of trees in between. Um, the next home is five hundred and thirty-one yards with a barrier of trees in between that. The stage faces away from the home, speakers are faced in a downward motion as to not make the sound any louder to the, towards the homeowner's property. Now, we can angle that an additional twenty-five degrees, and that would make it a complete one eighty, so we can do that, if we need to do that. Um, even though this is in the county, out of respect, we make sure these events adhere to the city's code for noise in residential districts. Um, and so our production staff has constant, consistently checked to make sure that each event, the decibel level is maintained at those events. Um, we did, uh, Brandon referenced no point of contact and no one to claim responsibility for those complaints. He's been at several of them.
Casey, you got one minute, please.
One minute, oh, okay, alright. Um, so we, we do actually, you know, are there, we are there, we maintain that, you know, there is somebody, um, on, on staff, and he actually did speak with Gary Crockett. Um, the main thing that I do want to point out is that there are, um, he's, he did speak and say that there were a lot of things, um, that people weren't allowed to drive onto the property. This is absolutely false, this is false information. The staff of the event and the sober monitors are the only ones allowed to drive onto the party, uh, to the premises. The contract state that Ubers and Lifts are not allowed, they are not allowed, they are turned away. He did mention in two thousand and eighteen that there was an issue where someone came up his driveway right after that. Um, that was put into the contracts to make sure that there was no, um, you know, that nobody came up his driveway. We are happy to place a security guard at his driveway if he would like to permit this from happening in the future. However, we don't feel like this is a current issue. Where am I?
Thank you, well, the clerk, the clerk had given me the, the sign that.
Okay, okay, alright, um.
And I actually, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but I actually think that the next time, there'll be probably be a lot more questions and all, the next time the licenses, to come before this council's license.
Yes, sir, and I think what we wanted to do is just make sure that it was addressed. Um, you know, unfortunately, our efforts to, to help groups facilitate safe events, um, have kind of been painted in a bad light last week. Um, and it was suggested in the open forum that we potentially had lied about some of the information, and that is not true. We've been very open about everything that we've been doing, and our main thing is to provide safe events for these, um, sorority parties. Um, a lot of investigation was done to make sure that these were in a good place. Um, we have done everything we could to talk with the landowners and help them, so.
Thank you, does council have any, any questions?
No.
Thank you, yes. If you would, give your name and address.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Gary Crockett, I'm the owner of SAS Security. My address is, uh, ninety-eight oh eight Belmont Lane. I've been there in security, I've had this company since two thousand and nine. Uh, Mr. Hanks came to me, um, with the, uh, farm party. Um, apparently, there were some things that were said about people being able to drive on and off the property, kids being able to run around and do all that. Let me assure everybody on this council that it's not true.
I know.
And a lot of people know me, you know what I do, I do not play when it comes to, when it comes to security, I run it by the book, I run it the way it's supposed to be. So let me give you a brief rundown of what takes place. First of all, the kids come out on buses. Every bus driver knows where they're going. When the buses arrive on the property, buses pull in, no one exits the bus until told to do so. We don't, we offload them one bus at a time. Once the bus gets offloaded, they, they
Once the bus gets offloaded, they, they get off, anything, trash, anything that they have, they drop it, got canisters out there, garbage cans, clothes, everything. The first people they meet are the people who are checking IDs. You get your IDs checked, you get an armband, if not, you get xed, then you go in, we move them in. There's a perimeter set up, ten security guys, one guy, the eleven guys way out just in case somebody wants to hop the fence, something like that. There's a perimeter around there, so there's no way that people are going in and out. If you're on the inside, you're safe. You got people who are stationed by Porter Johnson out there, you got two security that are stationed by the bars, so nobody's reaching over trying to get anything, or trying to get a bottle, or trying to do anything like that. There's also two security at very entrance that turn all cars away, other than the sober monitors. The sober monitors are out there, they come there, there can be anywhere from five to ten or more sober monitors that come out there, and they park their cars when everything's over, they leave. But you cannot, and they understand, you cannot have your friend come pick you up. Ubers don't come out there, food delivery, I personally turn everyone away. And the person in question that I had a problem with, I actually spoke to the gentleman and explained to him, this is what's going on. It's not run amok, it's not like a circus, and I invite anybody that wants you to come out and then take a look at it. When I tell you it's ran by the book, it's ran by the book, it's not by me.
Thank you.
Any questions, by me?
Any questions, Mr. Crockett?
You ever thought about going to a gym?
I've thought about it, but I'm drinking milk now. Get back to you on that.
I know Gary run a strong...
I went to high school with him. I, I, I would take, I would take Mr. Crockett.
We missed you at the reunion.
I hated I was out of town. I miss, I miss being there with everyone. Any questions?
Counsel, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the city council tonight? All right. Subject to the exercise of mayor veto, oh, yes, sir.
I think Ms. Howard had something she wanted to say, and then I'll speak.
All right, so anyway, I did just want to say to the club and the victim, first of all, to the victim and his family, um, that's an unfortunate event, and I, you have my prayers, and I hope you have a full recovery, and, um, thank you for your service. And as a mother, I, I feel your sympathy too, um, to your mother. And to the club, I would just like to say there's always room for improvement, but I would like to just advise you all, because the victim made a statement talking about, you know, how no one was able to come to his rescue. I know that in May, and I first learned about it when the mayor gave a proclamation, there's something called National Stop the Bleed. So, uh, first aid is very important to me. I'm not a medical professional at all, but I do just want to advise y'all to, um, probably talk to our, our chief, um, Chief Smith, to just make sure that y'all have all of your, your first aid components in order, and, because you are dealing with the public, and you do have more chances for something like this to happen, um, on your property. So that's very important to me, but I, I do appreciate the, the security and all of the measures that you have put into place, and I hope that they can get better, and wherever there's room for improvement, I hope you all can make those improvements also.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, I, I'd like to say and reiterate what I said earlier to today, is that I believe in safe communities, and that no community should be perceived as a gunman haven, and that police must be able to do their job, businesses must be able to do their job, and citizens must be able to do their job. To hear these statements on both sides, there comes a point that we have to all take our emotions out of the picture, who we like, who we don't like, whether we agree or disagree, and see what is the bigger picture. Let me first and foremost say, yes, there has been a lot of shooting in the Western Cluster, not just at Spades, right adjacent to Spades, right across the street, Chevron. Children have died, family members have died. But it speaks to a larger problem that is going to take all of us to fix. However, the burden of leadership is one thing that we all have to take in accountability, because when you're in leadership, you got to take the good, the bad, and the ugly. Spades has done a great job of supporting community events, they've done a great job of working with the public. People will celebrate you when you do, when you do things for them, but you also have to be mindful that you all are in leadership as well. And so when you, when something bad happens, they're going to crucify you, too. And that's a part of leadership that I had to learn as a young man, because people will celebrate you as long as you're doing well, but mess up one time, they're going to crucify you. But you also have to realize, to be able to accept it and to be able to say, you know, we messed up, we're going to fix it, and we're going to move on. That, those are things that have to be hap, said. To this mother who is really concerned about her son, you know, I, I know many people were concerned about whether this was going to be a closure or not. This is a wake-up call for our community. This is a wake-up call for Tuscaloosa. I can remember, I asked Chief Sanders one time how many people had died, and we've had so many homicides from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and they've been young people. I celebrate you guys for doing what you do as it relates to trying to build our community and trying to be a part of the community. I think that's awesome. We also have to take the bad, to say, what can we do, listening to this mother? Now, I'm grateful for, when we talked about the, the age limit, I recall that when you came to this council, you told us one particular age, just as Councilwoman Raven Howard Williams talked about, her suggestion. I'm going to suggest to you to kind of revisit some of the things that you, that you said that you were going to do to us. And the reason that, that I'm saying that is because it was validated by city staff that that, that is what was said, regardless of what, I understand what the law said. I'm just giving you something to, to think about. The bigger picture for me at this point is that I represent an aging, vulnerable population, and I want to make sure that they are as safe as anywhere. And so I thank each, each side for coming tonight. We must do better as a community. And, and as I said earlier today, I, I would like to meet not just with Spades, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to have sat down with the Quentin and Ralph and to talk this out, because I appreciate that, because that means that you all want to be a viable part of the community, and I appreciate that. I appreciate sitting down with you two as well as with Chief Sanders. So it's just not Spades, it's, it's everywhere around us. And so I'm going to be asking, uh, Chief Sebo Sanders to set up a meeting with the Housing Authority, with the businesses where there have been shootings, and any residents or victims that would like to attend, so, and, and so that we can work out a solution on what we feel will be best, so that we can mitigate this crime from our community and make the west side what the west side needs to be with pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Subject to the exercise of mayor veto and ordinances of a general nature or permanent operational applicable departments hereby ordered to otherwise implement council policy to stay inactive.
Move adjourned.
Moving second to adjourn, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Meeting's adjourned.